Call this evening's meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mrs. Chuppo? Mr.?
Here.
Mr. Basic?
Here.
Mr. Pontius?
May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November 26th meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes, PC 11-26-24.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have any old business? On to new.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application is for PC 24-42. Location is 672 Treeside Drive in property zone R3 residential, and it's about one-third of an acre. We're here for a conditional use for a family home for persons with disabilities. So existing dwelling meets all current zoning requirements. It's approximately 3,500 square feet in area. I believe it's a ranch or split level type of dwelling. There will be no alterations to this house with this application. This, the applicant is from Mentis Rehabilitation. And the way this will be operated, they will have up to five persons with disabilities residing full-time in the house with one living caretaker. And according to the applicant, their services will consist of support with daily living, social and occupational activities being performed in the home and in the community. And those will all be carried out by a trained, state-tested nursing aide. And the definition of a family home for persons with disabilities is a residential facility that provides room and board, personal care, rehabilitative services, and supervision in a family setting for six to eight persons with disabilities. It goes on to say that one to five persons, including resident staff, living in such a residential facility constitute a family for the purposes of this code and are not subject to the conditional use regulations. So what's that, what's that saying is if you were to have five persons residing there, they would not require to meet the conditional use regulations. However, having five persons with disabilities plus the one staff member living there permanently, that falls within this definition and is subject to the conditional use. And with that conditional use, there are, I think, 11 or 12 supplemental regulations. I won't go into detail with all these. The applicant does have some slides that he can discuss more about the business operation and kind of go through each one of these and how it applies. But based on what they submitted, I can verify that it does comply with all those regulations. Most of it is, you know, you have to reside there. Can't have more than two non-residents be at the home. There's no signage permitted and things like that. So I can come back to this as needed, but I would defer to the applicant so they can go through the business operations and how it applies. But with that, that's all I have. This is going to verify or review if the use is appropriate for this location. Happy answering, questions?
Anyone have any questions? Representative is here. Would you mind coming up? If you can turn that on, just push that middle button.
Yes.
And then please state your name and address.
I'm Jerry May, owner of Mentis Rehabilitation. The home residence is 672 Treeside Drive. I reside in Houston, Texas at 5202 Karoo Street.
Okay. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that what you're about to say shall be the truth?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So what we provide is when someone suffers a traumatic brain injury, they go to their acute care state to be stabilized. And a traumatic brain injury or acquired brain injury can be a stroke or traumatic brain injury. They go to the acute care hospital. They would then transfer into an acute care rehabilitation such as Sumer Rehab or Edwinshaw. From there, they would then transfer into a transitional facility. I used to own one of these right behind Swenson's for several years. We've since sold that company. Another company took it over and has since closed things down. Unfortunately, that means that leaves hundreds of these affected patients without services. And so in looking at that spectrum of care, which is further along in one of the slides, keep going, please. One more time. There we go. We are really providing more long-term supportive care. These are patients who have probably five to 10 years post-injury and look, can no longer live on their own independently. And so most of them are males between the age of 20 and 60 that are currently residing either in home with not necessarily the greatest level of care or an assisted living center. So if you could imagine a 25-year-old guy in an assisted living center is not a great environment. These patients that have regged maximum medical improvement, they are very, I would say, docile. Probably the bulk of our rehabilitation is getting them active on a daily basis, taking them out of an institutional-type environment, getting them into a residential environment to where they can live the best life that they can. That's, that's really who we are and what we do.
How many people were in the facility behind Swenson's?
We had 10 beds and we kept a pretty full census most of the time. But that was again, that length of stay at that location was somewhere between 60 to 75 days. These patients will reside there for life.
Was the one behind Swenson's more Medicare?
No, we were more commercial. This is Medicaid managed care such as CareSource or Buckeye. And then what we call catastrophic case management. These are independent organizations that work on behalf of either life planners or workers' compensation carriers when they've had a material injury. They manage the case and that's who we work with.
Okay. Anyone have questions?
You said that there's five people, patients?
Five patients.
And then there's one person that's permanent with them.
Actually, it's 24/7 care.
Okay.
That's one person is there. And actually, to be clear, we call it rush hour. In the morning and in the evening for bathing and dinner purposes, you will have a part-time staff that comes in. So it's one person that's there 24/7. And then a part-time person, I think the hours are seven till nine and then five till seven. So five patients, one person there 24/7, and then during the day, you'll have a part-time person for those hour windows.
I saw on the plan, I believe it's a five-bedroom house?
It is.
So where is this permanent?
Oh, they don't live there.
They don't live there?
Their staff there. They come, they show up and they work 12 or eight-hour shifts.
Okay.
Who does the shopping?
The staff does and we'll use Instacart or services like that. We're required, actually, the facility is licensed by the State of Ohio. Addiction and Mental Health Care Services is what they call a residential care facility type two. And we're required to keep 72 hours of dry food and 24 hours of cold.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
No, I appreciate your consideration.
Sure.
Turn this back off?
Please, thank you. Any other questions or a motion?
Public comment.
Oh, sorry. Anyone care to make comments? Please. Turn the speaker on, then state your name and address.
My name is Thomas Weber. I reside at 695 Treeside Drive.
Okay.
Where, um, I'm just-
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that what you're about to say shall be the truth?
I will.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so my wife and I are concerned, not so much in a care facility. We're concerned about, number one, this is probably going to change the zoning. Does it change only the zoning for that property or does it affect our properties surrounding it? And number two, being a resident up there for 35 years, the city in certain places in Stowe on Treeside Drive has designated parking areas where some are restricted on certain sides of the street. There are no signs to my knowledge at Pine Ridge and Treeside Drive. And over the years, with block parties and flea market sales on Saturday and everything else, we've had instances where people park wherever they feel like parking, on both sides of the street sometimes, and sometimes inferno fire hydrants, and sometimes they partially block my driveway. And it's been an issue over the years, in the summer especially, of going out there and then telling people you can't park here or getting the police involved. So I would just like to address that fact and say that I'm hoping the city recognizes that with all the people coming and going, and there may be visitors, I don't know, that there are designated areas where these people can park when there's an overflow on their property. That's all I'd like to add.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question and concern. As I mentioned before, first of all, these patients are rehabilitated and don't drive. So the only cars that will be there will be of the staff. One, they've been also instructed to park inside the garage. On occasion, we will have families that come and visit. Seeing that there's only five patients, I never anticipate having five families show up at once and they're instructed to park in the driveway. If you've seen the house before, you know it's double driveway with a curb that goes around the side, so there will never be parking in the street. If there is going on right now, it's because of the interior work that's being done.
I have seen problems with the contractor.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just get concerned because of people parking with high winds on the warehouse and blocking mail delivery and so forth. And there's a lot of school bus activity up there. We got four or five buses every month and school kids.
Sure.
Deliveries, you could guess, Amazon. So, you know-
I'm sorry, if, sorry, to cut you off. If we can keep everything on the mic so it can be recorded.
If you want to continue to comment, you need to be on the mic. They're, we have to have a meeting recorded. I'm sorry.
No, yeah, the only thing, like I said, you know, to reiterate is that basically with all the traffic up at that end, that, you know, if there is a lot of activity, you got people coming and going, caregivers, maybe deliveries, visitors coming, if there's an overflow, yeah, I'd just like to see the cars parked in a certain area on the street on one side so we don't have an issue up there.
Have you had a problem with police response when you've called?
No, no, but there's been issues up over the years. You know, there's a lot of people that have parties in the summer and sometimes it's not uncommon to have 10, 15 cars parked on our street. There's been times when they park on both sides of the street. And who wants to be calling the police department when that happens all the time?
I understand.
The city needs, I think it's just, I would like it in the notes that, you know, if this goes through, that there is designated signs up there so people know that are coming that don't know the area. Hey, we can park on this side of the street over here or we can't park over there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
If I can just clarify the, address the zoning question, the zoning is not changing. It will remain to be zoned R3. Just in the R3 district, you have other conditional uses like family homes, nursing homes, things like that. So the zoning will remain.
Zach, what's the percentage of other residential properties in Stowe that are similar to this?
I don't have that percentage on hand. There's not many in the city, though. I'd have to go through our database and check for any family homes. I know there's not any within 500 feet of this use, which is one of the criteria for the supplemental regulations.
Could, could we add to the motion that the police review parking in update signs or not?
You could. You can make that a comment. I would take that to police myself. I don't know if that's appropriate to add to the motion, though.
Okay. Well, as long, as long as it gets taken to them because-
Yeah, of course.
If this is constantly going on, they should be aware of it and do something about it.
Yep. Yeah, I will, I will speak to the police chief.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Well, I move to approve PC 2024-042 as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuppo?
Yes.
Mr. Basic?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to PC 2024-043, 4401 and 4411 Kent Road subdivision and variance.
Thank you. Yeah, we're here for, to review a lot split with variances. The property is 1.39 acres and Zone C4 general business. And look on the location map, this is just west of Fish Creek and basically across from the Marsh Road intersection. So on this property is a 5,500 square foot Midas, and then in the back is a 6,600 square foot retail building, which contains a dog groomer, a chiropractic office, insurance office, US nails, and a smoker-friendly location. And so what they're proposing is to basically split those so they're on their own lots. So parcel A will be split off to create a 31,000 square foot property. Our code requires a minimum of 40,000 square feet, so they are requesting variance from that requirement. Then the other variance that parcel A needs is from the frontage requirement. Based on how this is being split up, this will have no frontage on a public street and we require at least 120 feet. So they need variance to allow for zero feet, basically. Although they will have no frontage, the properties are served by a 25-foot drive access easement, which is existing. I believe it's existing. It runs through the properties along the access drive. And then we check for parking. 30 parking spaces are provided on the retail property. Based on the square footage, they would only need 28, so they still meet that requirement after the property is split. And then parcel B is Midas, so that will create a, again, just under 30,000 square feet of lot area. Code requires 40,000, so that's the only variance they need. And again, they meet the parking requirement by providing 19 spaces. And you only need two spaces per, per repair bay. They got eight there, so they need 16. They meet that requirement. Setbacks as well. So the only variances are listed here in red, again, it's for the lot area and the lack of frontage for parcel A. And that's all I have.
Is there anyone here from? State your name and address, please.
My name's Ian Katz, 1101 Monroe Street, Toledo, Ohio. Thank you, good evening. Oh, oh, guess where I'm at?
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that what you're about to say shall be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Fine.
So just a little, little background on this. I'm a stand-in for Chris Harder. He had to be in New York for work this week and the change of the meeting, I'm a stand-in for him. But these were parcels that was developed as, with the Midas, the family had owned it. Also developed retail typically adjacent to the Midas properties. About six years ago, the family sold to the employees to an ESOP. And in the six years since, the strategy has been to have the ESOP focus more on the Midas operations and look to sell off the retail and residential properties that may be adjacent to numerous Midas properties. And just found that probably somebody would be better suited to operate the retail and residential properties that are, that are owned. And this is one of those circumstances where you have a very interested party, current tenant, and we believe that somebody who's more focused on property development, retail, leasing, maintenance, and things like that would be better suited to, to operate and own, but it'd be impossible to do that without, without them being separate lots. So that's why we're here and asking for your consideration.
So Monroe Street is your corporate address?
Correct, that's, that's our office, yeah. We've been doing business here for probably six or seven decades, six, six decades now, so.
Yeah. I'm from Toledo.
Oh, are you?
When you said Monroe, no, no house is there.
No, no house is there, unless you get weed.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Is there a motion?
A motion for approval of PC 2024-043.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve PC 2024-043. Any further comments? Roll call.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuppo?
Yes.
Mr. Basic?
Yes.
Motion carries. On to PC 2024-044, 600 Seasons Road, site plan approval and variances.
Thank you again. This property is at the corner of Seasons and Allen Road. It's 21.1 acres in total and is owned I-2 industrial, and it's also located in the Mudbrook setback overlay. We're here to review a site plan with variances. So existing conditions, this property, this site is made up of seven different parcels. So if, if approved, all these will be combined to create a 21.1 acre lot. And running through that property is the Mudbrook stream, which follows along the east side of the property and follows the south end. And that comes into play later on with the Mudbrook setback overlay, which requires a variance from. So this is rotated, so north is on the right side of the screen. This is being developed by FOG. This is a 250,000 square foot warehouse building. It'll be located 48 feet from Seasons Road, 80 feet from the west side, which will be on the top of the screen, about 450 feet from the east side, we're along Allen Road, and then 132 feet from the nearest rear property line, which would be, if I can find my cursor, for the nearest corner to the nearest rear property line would be 132 feet. Included in this site, they will have a detention basin at the south end of the property, then a bio-retention basin over on the west, or sorry, the east side of the building, next to the loading area. This also includes 312, or sorry, 134 spaces on the, on site. The code does require 312, which is based on one space per 800 square feet. 312 is a little excessive for this type of use, so they are requesting variance. That'd be 178 parking space variance, but they are including 64 spaces on the south end, which would be land-banked, which if being approved like this, they could be installed in the future as needed. So they have space to install an additional 64 spaces. The landscaping plan, they will be providing 6% of the parking lot as landscaped islands. Code only requires 5%. So that'll be in the form of nine shade trees throughout the parking lot, and then also installing 11 trees along Seasons Road, and then about 126 shrubs along the northwest and south sides of the building, which is highlighted in yellow on the screen. This plan was reviewed and approved by the landscape arborist. Then coming to the variance, so again, this is the Mudbrook setback overlay. That overlay has setback standards from streams and wetlands. There's no wetlands affected by this development, but there's that stream running through the property. The setback is determined by the drainage area for that stream. And we use a site stream stats, which was included in the complete packet, to determine that. So they're required, any development is required to be at least 75 feet from the stream. The only issue is that they're installing two basin outlets within that setback. And that's the only development being proposed within that stream setback. Otherwise, any parking, loading, buildings, anything like that will be outside of that. So the only issue is on the south end, they're going about approximately 20 feet, 25 feet into that setback. And then on the east side, the outlet would be about, you know, a couple feet within that setback. Elevations, building will be about 44 feet in height. The I-2 district permits up to 50 feet in height, so it meets that requirement. And elevations, just showing all the sizes, I assume these will be, look just like the FOG buildings on the, going along Route 8. And I'll leave this up for review. The only condition of approval is recommended by the engineering department. They recommend that the traffic study shall be reviewed and approved by the city engineer prior to issuance of a building permit. So they're working on submitting it and reviewing it to see if any road improvements along Seasons Road would be necessary with this. If so, and it determines that they need, whether it may be signals or wider access drives, that would change the development plan, they would have to come back for approval if it's significantly altered. But with that condition, that requires them to get that traffic study done and approved. So happy answering, any questions?
Anybody have questions? Is there a representative here? Name and address.
Mike Novacek with Ray FOG Building Methods, 981 Keynote Circle, Cleveland, Ohio, 44131.
And do you solemnly declare and affirm that what you're about to say shall be the truth?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Well, thanks for taking our, reviewing our application. Like I say, my name is Mike Novacek and a couple colleagues of mine are here, Mike Merle, our president, John Lachina, vice president. And between the three of us, we've been here seven times before. And this is our eighth project along Seasons Road or the two roads, Scarlet Lane or Gray Lane that we've developed. So as far as the plans you see, looks very similar to what we've, the product that we've done in the past, and it's been very successful with the location in Stowe and the location proximity to the highway. And this is just an extension of that. The product is, the building product is very similar to what we've done in the past and the parking requirements, we've proven to be adequate for that type of facility. And we think, we think it's, it'd be a very good addition to the city of Stowe, so.
So it'll be fairly similar, no great differences? So it'll be fairly similar, no great differences?
No. Be the same as what you've seen already.
Okay. Well, you've done a great job there.
Well, thank you.
Out of curiosity, do you have a tenant lined up for it?
Oh, no, this would be speculative. But all the, all of them have been speculative and usually within a year, they've been full.
Been a very successful venture.
Yes.
So the other seven buildings, are they fully occupied with?
Either fully occupied or in the process of being fitted out for tenants.
For tenants.
With the exception of the one we're building, we're just finishing up now. Soon to be, soon to be, have a tenant.
Thank you.
Will you enter, I don't know if it was in the slide, from Seasons Road or what's the side road?
Seasons Road.
You'll come in?
Yeah, there's no access off of Allen Route.
Off Allen, yeah.
Because you have to go over the Mudbrook. So if you see where it says almost the old driveway there.
Yeah.
If you go back to that.
Can you go back?
Area.
Thank you.
You see that driveway by the 600?
Uh huh.
That would be very similar to where the trucks would access the back. And near the 570 would be similar to the location for the auto employee parking.
Right. It's a lot of traffic on that road. Not part of this, but.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Any public comment? Why move that we approve PC 2024-044-600 Seasons Road as submitted? That was as submitted, so, yeah. Yeah. That's okay.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Truppo?
Yes.
Mr. Basic?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. On to PC 2024-045-4285 Kent Road.
All right, so this application, 4285 Kent Road. This is where the old Stowe Glen Retirement Facility is located, which is currently under redevelopment. Property we are discussing is highlighted in red and is just over eight acres. It's owned C4 General Business. We're here for a study item, so this is not being voted on. They just want to bring this to planning commission for discussion. They have the application submitted, it's been reviewed. So we're still waiting on some revisions before it comes to you. But they just want to come here, get your feedback on the plan before they, you know, send a final version in. All right, so given the layout of this property, given some references. So currently under construction, where everyone sees the dirt being piled up, that's the nursing home that's under construction right now. Which is next to the Meyer Gas Station. The south, or sorry, the back end of this property, where the two existing buildings are located. Those are being converted into apartments. It's gonna be 130 units. And then the building up front, that building will be demolished, which was required as part of the last development. So that'll be demolished and then redeveloped. With this plan, you know, zoom in a little bit on this, so we can kind of see what's going on. But we got two retail buildings. This will be a Sheets with the gas canopy up front and then the Chick-fil-A on this side of the property. Again, this one's rotated to fit the screen better, so north is looking on the right side of the screen. I'll go in each one of these separately, kind of give a brief overview of what they're proposing. I'll start with Sheets. So zooming in on this one. Sheets will be 6100 square feet, include 42 parking spaces. This will be on its own property as proposed. It'll be 1.8 acres. This will require three conditional uses, one for a counter service restaurant, one for a gas station, and then one for drive-through, which the drive-through will be at the rear of the property, come along the side of the building to pick up the food. Variances identified so far, they need variance for the height of the gas canopy. Variances for lighting, which was common with this last development. There's, with the photometric plan, it shows that they don't meet the, I think it's zero foot candles along the west property line. Because this property over here, while it's the nursing home property, it's only an access drive up here, it's zone residential. So any commercial lighting has to be zero foot candles along the property line. So they will be exceeding that a little bit, which requires a variance. And then a variance from, from screening, I believe. I'll double check my notes as I go through this, but three variances identified. There may be more as we get revisions coming through. That's the bulk of this application. The renderings, if you've seen a Sheets, it's typically how they look like. There'll be some outdoor patio seating. Signage will be reviewed separately, so we don't have those details yet. And then a gas canopy, the maximum is 17 feet in height. This one will be proposed at 22 and a half feet. So that's what we have for the proposed Sheets. And then applicants here, if they have to go over this in more detail. Next I'll go to is for Chick-fil-A, which should be on the bottom side of the screen, highlighted in the black. So that building will be 5,000 square feet, contain 82 parking spaces. The property will be 1.9 acres. This one does require two conditional uses, same for the counter service restaurant and one for the drive-through. Looks like the cars will be stacked up towards the rear of the property here, filtered through. There will be a drive canopy here, which is included in the elevations coming up. And they'll wrap around the building on the side and then exit out, exit out this drive. Two variances identified so far, one for lighting, same issue as the other one. The other two are for the subdivision of this land, which will be for the lot width and the lot depth. They will need variances from. And then run through the, the elevations. Bottom of the screen here is showing the drive-through canopy with the drive-through signs, where the cars will be stacked up on the side. And then that's all I have for Chick-fil-A. And then moving on to the back portion of the property, where there will be two retail buildings. This property, you can probably tell already, they'll need variances for lot width and lot depth. It will still have frontage along Kent Road and maintain that access. And you can probably tell from this, all these sites, including the nursing home site, it'll be all served through a bunch of access easements, so that they're all interconnected with each other, which will be good for safety access from the fire department. So for the, for the retail portion, it'll be two buildings. On the top side of the screen, it'll be 13,100 square feet. The bottom part will be 15,000 square feet. Total parking will be 167 parking spaces on 4.9 acres. And variances, same thing for lighting, and then lot width and lot depth. And I don't believe we have any elevations for the retail buildings, which is part of the requirements for the final submittal that we're waiting on. Overall landscaping plan, sorry?
You said when you were talking about Sheets, that that's residential next to them? Aren't they next to, what is, the Giant Eagle Gas Station?
In the Meyer?
My, sorry. Double that's, I understand, but.
So this is the site, this is C4.
Yeah.
Meyer is two properties over.
So in between, that's residential?
Yeah, actually the property that everybody is not the nursing home, it's the property leading back to the apartments. So this portion is residential, R3.
Okay. I can't imagine we're ever gonna put a home in that section.
Likely would not be allowed. They need a lot of variances to do that, to split the property up. Overall landscaping in the plan, this is still under review by the landscape arborist. But it'll include plenty of new trees and interior parking lot landscaping as required. And yeah, I'll leave this up for review. I can go back to any of the slides as you need. But this is overall the proposed development. We have the applicants here, if you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Name and address?
Lance Osborne, 7670 Tyler Boulevard in Mentor, Ohio.
And do you solemnly declare and affirm that what you are about to say shall be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead. I think Mr. Cohen did a pretty good presentation. The only couple of things I would add as it pertains to the driveway on the R3 parcel is there are easements recorded on that that benefit not only the property we're developing, but also the nursing home properties. I don't think anything can really be built on that strip of land right there. Another thing that we're proposing to do is to subdivide the property into three parcels, where there's a separate tax parcel for Sheets, a separate tax parcel for Chick-fil-A, and a separate parcel for the rear retail. And we're going to record an ECR so that the traffic and everything operates like it's one property. However, it'd be three property for taxes and insurance and that sort of thing. And in that ECR, the property owners are going to agree and consent to any variances that would be necessary in the event it was under separate ownership. Because it's my understanding, the city code says, as long as it's, it's recorded on the property, that those parcels are basically consenting to the variances, a variance is not necessary. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And maybe the last piece is just the main driveway going through will access the Stowe Glen Apartments for emergency access as well. So that was taken into account. With that being said, there's representatives from, from Sheets here, if you have any questions for them. Our civil engineers here, if you have any engineering related questions. And I'm happy to address any questions as well. Any questions?
It's too early. Do you have any retailer, sorry, people set up tendently for retail?
So we are in talks with multiple retailers, anywhere from small restaurants to larger retailers that would potentially take an entire building and everything in between. But we wanted to really come today to make sure, you know, this body's comfortable with what we're proposing. We will be submitting a traffic study any day now. And we'll go through, go through the proper channels of the full review. But we just wanted to make sure that, you know, everybody was comfortable with this plan so that we could really go out and market it as well for the rear retail. What's your timeframe if everything went well? If everything went well, we'd like to be in the ground May 1st. So that means, you know, hopefully an early approval in 2025. Then our engineer probably has 60 days to do civil drawings and then the city and county review of those drawings. Okay. Any other questions? The Sheets representative have any comments?
Yeah, I can.
Sure. Your name and address?
Yeah, Ellen Selly with Sheets, 351 Sheets Way, Clayesburg, Pennsylvania.
And do you solemnly declare and affirm that what you are about to say shall be the truth?
I do.
Great.
Great. So again, great presentation. Thank you. There were just a few more things that I wanted to add. We actually have a fourth conditional use. We also have outdoor seating on our building. So we'll make sure that gets added if it's not already. And then there was an additional variance too for our canopy. Could you switch back to that elevation?
As I was going to chip in, yeah, the other variances for the, our code. You cannot have backlit canopies. So this canopy would be backlit, meaning there would be lights behind, you know, the, the band or the Sheet sign. So our code prohibits those, so they would be requesting variance from that.
It's just an LED strip and it kind of gives off a red hue. It doesn't, doesn't light it up too much. But we'll, I think nighttime pictures and stuff are provided, but we'll go through that variance process too with everything else. And then this will be similar to other Sheets in the area. You mentioned it's a little over 6,000 square foot building, indoor/outdoor seating, drive-through. Everything is 24 hours at our store. Everything's accessible 24 hours. We do not have a car wash and I just want to make it clear that.
You don't want to be number 11?
Not this time. And then we will have a personal truck diesel, but not commercial truck diesel available at this site. But if you have any other questions related to Sheets?
Did you, were you part of the Sheets that just got built on 43? Does that one have a drive-through? I'm not aware of the Sheets that has a drive-through right now.
Is that the one in Brimfield?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Yes, not from. That one does have a drive-through. It won't be the same building. That drive-through wraps around, like the queue wraps around, so this queue will be a little different and the building layout will be slightly different. But everything else is pretty much the same. Their canopy on that one is the same number of pumps, but they're six in a row. And we have two and two, two and two, two and two, but six total, 12 pumps. So we're serving the same amount, it's just set up a little bit differently for this site. And that one should be open here in January, so. Yep, yep, all of the signage, materials, everything like that will be the same.
Okay.
If I could also clarify the variance for the screening. That, that variance would apply to, again, abiding the residential district. Between commercial and residential, you have to have screening in the form of fence, shrubs, wall or anything like that. So in this case, they will not be providing that.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it. All right, thank you. Thank you. Any public comments?
My name is Philip Boyer. I live at 2984 Hollywood Court.
And do you solemnly declare and affirm that what you are about to say shall be the truth?
Yeah.
Okay. And you're free to speak.
I'm not an engineer and I apologize, but could you go back to the, I don't even know what you call, these are too detailed. I can't understand this. Could you back up to, like in the beginning? There you go. See, I live in Hollywood Court, Lake Run. You see it over there, right? And I'm just trying to get an idea in my own mind, because the other drawing is. Where, I mean, you got the Myers Gas Station, right?
Yeah.
And then the retirement or the rehabilitation and. So is that where the new stuff is gonna be going to C4 and that? Oh, right there, okay.
Yeah.
And let's see here. That's Kent, that's Kent Road, that's Kent Road, I'm a little confused on that, Pitts Creek Kent Road.
I'm not sure why it says Kent Road out there, but this is definitely Kent Road. This is my, if you look at the map, this is Meyer.
Okay.
This is Meyer Store. Dick's Sporting Goods is being constructed right here, so. Yeah, this, this property has that, if you drive by on Kent. It has that front building out there, which will be demolished as part of this development. So all of that, all the Sheets, Chick-fil-A, the retail will be all constructed within this property line.
Okay. And again, I might get put around here, that's the Meyers. So this will be west of the gas station or east?
East.
Yeah, that's the only space you really have. So I assume when you're going back like that, because I heard residential, something, is that right? Chick-fil-A and the Sheets and?
Chick-fil-A, Sheets and two retail buildings.
Retail, I'm sorry. And then retail buildings, where they go?
In that same red area.
Okay, I guess in the.
They're at the back of it.
That's, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
It's in the back.
So we're, sorry, if you can see where this, let me go to this slide. So where this building is located?
Right.
This front one, that will be demolished. This is pretty much where the two. This front one, that will be demolished. This is pretty much where the two retail buildings will be.
That is Stowe Glen. That's the old Stowe Glen.
Yeah, the old Stowe.
Yeah, and that'll be gone.
Okay, so that will be up. I just want to keep away from my neighborhood.
You're, you're not gonna be because you've got, you've got those apartments and the nursing.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's fine. And I also spoke to somebody, our, I don't know, our area representative. He called me very nice gentleman. He explained to me what was going on. Because, and this is probably not the time, but they talked about putting up trees as a buffer behind this place that kind of backs up to our property. And the gentleman told me, yeah, they have scheduled like seven Evergreen. It's a different matter, I guess. I apologize.
Yeah, that, that's when we did the, uh, nursing home and.
Yeah, and yeah.
And, and there were, there was a boundary there.
Yeah.
The gentleman who called me was real good. He counted them off and that's fine. I was just concerned that, because there's property behind the Myers Gas Station.
Yeah.
That's open. And I see there's like a, they didn't lock it all off. So it looks like a driveway might be right back there someday. So that property back there, is that not discussed yet?
Not, not even though attached.
A later day I'll be there.
Maybe so.
Thanks for explaining it to me. I just, I thought the only place you could put those things up, up front by Kent Road, right? I mean, you're not gonna.
Well, that, the Sheets and the Chick-fil-A will be closer to Kent Road, correct?
That's right. I assumed. I was just, I guess I was worried about going.
Yeah, no, you're good.
Thanks, you're done.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Okay, just a reminder, this is a study item, so no voting on this.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, if you have any feedback or anything for the applicant, that's all it is.
Seems, seems pretty good.
All right. Yeah, um, other than that, uh, do you have a discussion item?
Nope. Do you?
Yes. Yeah, last, uh, I can remember the last meeting, but, um, yeah, we're working on adult cannabis use in the city, uh, which is being reviewed by council now. Uh, Councilman Herman's here, uh, which, so they did the first reading at the last meeting. So they got two more to go before it's, you know, public meeting and all that. Um, but Councilman Herman wanted to come to planning commission, just kind of discuss your thoughts on it. And yeah, so Councilman Herman, if you wanna go up?
Hi, thanks for having me. And first of all, thank you all for your service. I know how hard it can be.
Wait, wait.
So I'm sorry. My name is Kyle Herman. My address is three, six, five, two Highwood Avenue, Stowe. Thank you for the reminder.
And do you solemnly declare and affirm that what you are about to say shall be the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're good now, pal.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, for holding me accountable. Um, yeah, I appreciate all the work that you do and I know that there's been a lot of turnover on planning commission in recent years. And I'm pretty new to council myself, just got sworn in in January. And I wish we'd had more opportunities to build relationships with each other. Uh, but that's hard with things like the sunshine laws, which is why, as I was talking to Zach, we ultimately decided that it was easiest for me to just come to your meeting. And then so thanks for letting me speak. And like I remembered last, or over the summer, I saw Mrs. Clancy at an event, uh, and we were talking about how we wished that there was more communication between the planning commission and council, but then when I talk with city staff, it's hard because we can't have two of us from the council's planning committee or, uh, more than two of you from the planning commission, uh, like basically in the same room together unless it's part of a public meeting. And I had been hoping that, uh, we would all get to know each other more, uh, during the code rewrite process, since we have a sort of mix on the steering committee, but, uh, for, for those of you not on the steering committee, I want to know that I'm very interested in hearing your perspectives as we go through that process as well. Uh, but the thing that most immediately, uh, brings me to you is, uh, I, I always read your minutes and sometimes I, I watch, uh, the, the videos if I have a hard time understanding stuff and I, I talk it with, with Zach about them. Uh, but most of the time I feel like the council really values your expertise and recommendations. And, uh, I, I, from, from my perspective, I feel, I feel like we rarely make changes. But I was kind of confused when I watched the, uh, meeting about the cannabis dispensaries and the audio wasn't very good. And so I couldn't, I missed, I missed parts of it. And, uh, it, it sounded like there were a couple of people who expressed a preference for maybe a, a five hundred foot uh, distance from, uh, residential zones. And then it kind of seemed like out of nowhere, there was like a proposal for a thousand foot. I didn't, I couldn't hear the like reasoning for it, but I heard something to the effect of, oh, well, council will probably change it anyways. And then there was laughter and then, and then the vote and it went through, which like I totally, I totally understand. Cause I, you look, we have some, some times where, you know, people come to us asking for variances and I, yeah, it's, but, yeah. Um, I, I, and you, I, I think part of it is that we, uh, I, I think we have different roles on planning commission and, and council and expectations from the community. Like you're all here as volunteers and, uh, I, I understand that you also, a- as you're guided through making decisions, uh, you properly have a very strict adherence to the code. Whereas for council, I think sometimes when people ask for variances, we see them more from the public perspective and the public repercussions and things like that. And so I think that's why we're, we're more likely to, and, and so I'm just, what I'm saying is like, it's, it's, I can real, I only speak for myself and not all of council, but it's nothing personal. Like if, uh, like the council makes, uh, amendments to your, your recommendations and things like that, I just wanted to know that I, I value all of you. But I am interested in hearing more about like the reasoning behind the a thousand feet from residential on the, the cannabis. Because the effect of that is to basically ban cannabis dispensaries from all commercial zones in Stowe. And, uh, so I, I have talked with other council members who are thinking of putting together some sort of amendment, uh, to perhaps relax it from that a thousand feet from residential. Uh, in light of the fact that fifty-seven percent of Stowe residents voted last year to regulate cannabis like alcohol. And so since we have over a hundred places in Stowe, uh, that sell alcohol, it seems, uh, kind of, uh, off balance that, uh, the only place where, uh, a cannabis facility could be, would be in the industrial corridor and depending on the location, it most likely would be a production facility. And there would be zero cannabis dispensaries. And so we're trying to figure out a way and, uh, if we, we, I'm, I'm only speaking for myself now. And a couple of, right, I talked to, uh, looking into maybe like reducing that a thousand feet to five hundred or something like that. But I wanted to come and, and discuss it with you beforehand, cause I didn't want you, uh, to feel like we were just, uh, rejecting a recommendation out of hand. So I'd appreciate your perspective and input.
I, I, I thought the thousand came from the state of Ohio or something like that, if I remember correctly.
Uh, no, from residential properties, there's no state requirement for that. There is a requirement from uses like schools, churches, libraries, that there's a five hundred foot state requirement. City increased that to thousand. Um, but there's no residential buffer requirement.
You know, something from the state.
Yeah. I think part of the discussion was, or part of the reasoning was that they could come through and apply for a variance from meeting setback if they wanted to still, because with the thousand foot buffer, they, they are restricted from any commercial properties without a variance. So I, I think part of that discussion was if they wanted to go to commercial property, they just apply for a variance from that separation distance. But. Yeah, but that's what, that's what I recall from the meeting. Sorry.
They reduce the quantity from five hundred to a thousand. How many there could be, where they could be, if I remember the map. We took, when it went from five hundred to a thousand, we took off of the map of efficiency side.
And, and commercial zones. Yeah. Yeah. And so the way is that with, with that buffer, without applying for variance, they could, they could really just be one of those uses in the city. But I think just looking for your feedback on any reasoning. Or, or if there's any qualms out, if, if council did want to decrease it.
I wouldn't go below five hundred.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I, this is going way back in my memory bank. I thought one time the city of Stowe would have about no, nothing with cannabis facilities, period. And all of a sudden, now it's getting us back in again and like we skipped a step or something. I thought that, I remember hearing somebody in back in the, that some people would not have any cannabis facilities in the city.
Are we still recording or no?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
You should be on.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, again, I was kind of rephrased. Um, my memory bank serves somewhat, uh, positive here, but the, I remember somebody stating, could have been off the record or whatever, that there was going to be no cannabis facilities, period, in the city of Stowe. And then all of a sudden, we've kind of skipped a step and now we're allowing them in. And going through all the variances and, and, and conditional uses and all that. I just doesn't, and we'll confuse those two unless somebody else can back that up about my memory. Uh, it just seems odd that we've, you know, made a complete change there and I, it may have, I don't know who, again, I'm not gonna say who it came from, but. It, it did, I did, stuck my mind for some reason. And I don't know who made it or when they made it or why they made it, but. So, you know, we've, we've made a big leap here to know there won't be any, to let's put them five hundred, a thousand feet. You know, my, you know, I think my thinking of the thousand is we limit them. And like, like Mary had said, that, you know, if they do want to put it at seven fifty or six hundred or five hundred, come to us or come to the, just come to the city. And we would then allow, we have to review things.
Control the amount.
You can control the amount that way. If you start to bring them down to the five hundred, then you've lost that control. There's no control, but any, any number, yeah, you could have twenty-five. I'm not saying, I don't even know what the number is. I'm, I'm just saying, I know the Falls has maybe two, three. I don't know. I'm just going by what I've seen on the, on the street.
I thi- I think the Falls has one license.
Okay.
So. Two.
Two. And one's on State Road by Chestnut, I think. Now, I don't know where the other one might be, but I guess that's the point is that, you know, we, we could have tons of these or we could have none of these. Or we can have a somewhat manageable amount. So I think that was the, that, that was the, the thinking, I think, at that time.
I think, I think we don't need ten cannabis stores like we have ten car washes. And there's gotta be a way to limit it reasonably.
And I think that was the thousand.
Sorry. That was the thinking behind the thousand, that come to us through the process for a variance, we can control it that way. As opposed to.
Yeah.
But at the same, go ahead.
The state does also require that they are separated by mile.
Okay. But the, the same point. I don't want this to keep coming to us to do a variance. It's just like the signs. And it's crazy and why, why do that? I mean, have a number and stick to it and under no circumstances leave it. That's my ten cents.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, and I could just a- add some, uh, I know that years ago, there was a vote on council about medical dispensaries, where it was like a four, three vote to ban medical dispensaries in Ohio, in, in Stowe, when Ohio was allowing medical dispensaries. But the reason that the issue of cannabis is coming back this year is because cannabis was legalized statewide by the vote last year. And so cities have the option to, uh, either just allow the state law, which is already pretty strict in its regulations, like keeping them a mile apart. And like also that they're regulated more like pharmacies than vape shops, uh, like with the, that's, uh, and you heard from, um, Mr. Pontius, uh, last time about like his experience. And I know it's like new, it's, it's a scary thing as this other, you know, cities around us are trying to experiment with, with where they're allowed. Uh, but the way that, you know, we're, we're trying to also with the code update, like make it friendlier to businesses and to, uh, like not force businesses to go through the variance process as often. Uh, like when I heard that, like there, well, there was an idea that maybe they, the business would just have to ask for a variance in order to be able to operate in a commercial area. Uh, I was kind of con- concerned about, like I, I would like to not be in the habit of, of having, uh, so many variances. And especially, uh, for, for a situation like this, uh, because the regulations are so strict already. A business has a limited time between they get, when they get a license and when they can actually open the dispensary. And so a business would not reasonably have time to ask for a variance. And so like as I'm thinking through, I totally agree. We don't want to be oversaturated with, uh, cannabis dispensaries. But as I'm thinking about these limits of, of whether to just keep the state's, uh, recommended distances from like public lands or to add the extra, like a five hundred or a thousand feet. Um, my understanding was that the, like five hundred foot distance would limit Stowe to at most three or four locations, depending on where they were. Uh, but taking it down to a thousand would be most likely one or two and only two. It was like at the like extreme ends of the industrial zone and, and would probably be industrial production and not actual dispensaries. Uh, but I, I a- a- agree that we want to be sort of cautious because it's new. But I think we also have to recognize what the residents want and that the culture is changing as the stigma toward cannabis decreases. People are recognizing that it's safer than alcohol. And so we're, I'm, I'm trying to understand. I think the council, the rest of council is unders, trying to understand how to find that balance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Motion for adjournment?
Yes. I, oh, I have to make the motion, huh?
Yes.
A motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?